I'm doing good. I saw the email back with, with L.R. Yeah, you're gonna give him the money back? Right, that's what he said. But he got a D that he shouldn't have. So it's, it's, actually to me, his security looks to me like... Apparently they emerged or some kind of crazy thing. He called me up too, and he was happy. Of course, I was right about him, you know, and he was here, and then he was on vacation. I was told this thing was all, remember we went through this thing when we first did the whole project? We essentially approved of this thing, we got it, this way in 26... I knew, I knew. And so I'm looking at going, where did he submit this? We were talking, this is, and even, even when he did that, Wes said, yeah, that one is coming. Yeah, but, but that ain't, that ain't what it is.
It ain't guaranteed.
No, no, but, but that ain't what he was saying. He was saying, this is all done, it's all, we're being led down the road here this... Yeah, I knew that was gonna be slow on. But we gotta get that. But we did the project based on that. Well, that's the problem. This didn't just happen to me.
At the same time, I should've, I should've... You don't say I leave.
Anyway. Okay, good.
Hello, Mr. Wes.
How are you? Are you going to address tonight, when all these people are here?
Just in the sense of that we're moving into community of the whole, we're not really gonna get into conversation.
Hey, how you doing?
I'm doing good.
Crystal.
Hey, how you doing?
Crystal should have one.
Good to see you.
Right here. Yeah, I'll be up somewhere. Wes, you give, you give Chris a hard time, he's late now.
Well, I keep saying, I'm not afraid to ask. Well, I keep my mouth shut.
Oh, that's right, I forgot.
I give myself extra time to go write that. And you hear something, think about it, and then forget about it.
You know, I always use ways, every single time. I've gotten to now, my kids taught me to do that, because if I don't, I will be...
Trying to avoid speed trails?
No, no, I'm late. It, it, it does. But yeah, I like that too.
I use it for a while, and I find it sort of sending some goofy ways and stuff, it's some really strange stuff, and I'm like...
I'm telling you, every, every time that I'm taking a goofy way, that's been, okay, I should've done that.
Call our meeting to, to order for Council meeting Monday, March the 5th, 2018. Thank you all for your patience, and it's always great to see a good number of many people here, because you, it just shows that you care about the, the business of the county. And we appreciate all of your efforts, you can choose to be anywhere in the world, and you choose to be here. I hope that we're all respectful and, and civil as we make our way through our agenda tonight. And with that, I'll turn it over to Councilman Hudson, please, for our indication and pledge.
Bless Craig. Lord, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight to conduct the county's business. Lord, give us wisdom in every decision we make, and how we make it, and how we go about our business tonight. Bless us and keep us in the center of your will, always. And Lord, we just pray this prayer in Jesus Christ's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now hold our public forum, this is the public's opportunity to give feedback to council on issues that you deem important. It's not really a question and answer time, as council is not really, is not expected to respond during this forum. Madam Clerk, will you please call the first speaker?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Farley Patel, and I've been living in Pickens County since last eight years, and I have a few convenience stores around here. My issues for, is like for Sunday's alcohol sale in Pickens County. Recent alcohol law change for a lot of selling beer on Sunday in East City and Inver County, they've made myself drop tremendous, as my store is just one block away from city limits. It's not only hurting me as a business owner, but it also taking the city revenue out of our town to other towns and counties. I would like to request all of you to see this, help, help me, so we can sell beer on Sunday and grow, grow our community by keeping the revenues over town. All my customers who shops with me during the week, faces challenges to go other store for buying anything just for this one day. I urge all of you to consider my request, get approval for Sunday's beer sale, as usual. I will always make sure to have a revenue community and town in whichever way I can. Once again, I thank you all very much for giving me an opportunity to stand in front of you and let me address my issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Over three hundred members of conservatives of the upstate have questions for this council. We won't answer after the public forum. Why was there a lack of transparency, and no press release, and no mention of it in November, December, or January? Or on your Facebook page? Before this trip to Karl's Ruhr, if becoming a sister city is so great of an idea, why was there no transparency? Was it really necessary for five to go on the taxpayer level? In today's technologically advanced world, this could have been done by teleconference and virtual tours, which wouldn't cost a dime. We've had Alliance Pickens a lucrative amount of taxpayer dollars to bring in jobs, so why did y'all need to go? Who brought this sister city agenda to the table? Who decided who would go? Why didn't the councilman make a motion to call for a vote on whether this travel expense was a good idea? Why was Karl's Ruhr chosen? It is listed as one of the most liberal cities in Germany, and welcomes improperly vetted Islamic Syrian refugees. Why would we want to culturally exchange ideas and bring liberal-minded people to be part of our everyday life? When we are predominantly conservative a county, who has a resolution in place not to be a welcome county to improperly vetted refugees? Why risk putting our citizens at risk if Karl's Ruhr decides to send refugees in as a part of a cultural exchange program? To enroll in tri-county tech or our other public schools? Finally, we want to note that Councilman Kastner and his wife visited family in Germany while on the taxpayer level. Conservatives of the upstate is against this sister city program, and we are disgusted with the lack of transparency and the milking of the taxpayer for this trip.
Thank you.
Patty Murphy. Thank you gentlemen for having me here tonight, and I'm too upset about this sister city in Germany, and that's what I'm here to talk about. I'm upset with the lack of transparency. You guys were supposed to be the most transparent council ever, and where was the transparency when you decided this trip? It's my understanding that this trip was decided at a retreat, I'm not driven forward, not sure of that, but that was my understanding, and it hasn't been mentioned or talked about since then. So I want to know why? Why wasn't it brought to, to Berlin? Why was there not a notice? Why didn't people know about this until after you got back from the trip? Also, my concern for there being a family member living in Germany. Who, who decided that Karl's Ruhr would be the sister city for Pickens County? I've done research on this city, everybody should do research on this city. I see absolutely nothing about Karl's Ruhr, but if anyway, was anything similar to Pickens County? So my concern is, was there someone who has a family member in Karl's Ruhr? And was that why this city was chosen? Was that family visited on that trail? Um, it, it's just very upsetting to me that you guys would just take our money and spend it on a trip to Germany without it ever coming up before anybody. So I think it should be paid back. I believe all the money that was used for county council to go on a trip to a sister city in Germany without a vote should be paid back to the taxpayers. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Ken Formanski, and first of all, I want to thank the board for the prayer that was given, and I thank you for any bravery of my Lord and Savior, these persons. I really appreciate it, thank you. What my topic is on the fire department, the proposed tax coming up potentially is on the table now, I'll meet the paper. Is it a pump in town? And I want to know, like, what does this mean fair share to me, as whoever gets this new assessment is sharing the cost? And all assessed, paid in the same amount? When the fire department responds to a fight, do they look at what they are responding to as the size of the diamond to home? No, they send out all the equipment, it doesn't matter how big or how small the home is. Second, how will you decide on what is fair share, and how will it be implemented? Will this so-called one-time fee disappear, or will it just be a one-time fee collect? I am against the way you are trying to raise these funds, and it goes everywhere. I am not against the fire department, this is just another way of redistributing the money to property owners. Whether someone chooses to live in a fifty thousand dollar home or a million dollar home, that homeowner is already paying the board that has assessed taxes. The village rate sets that already. I am against the new assessment being based on a village rate. In closing, the board is proposing a funding mechanism to address these other issues. What are the other issues, and how safe, and how we are against the fund being collected? I'm mainly against, if we have to have money raised for the volunteer party departments, I feel that everybody should pay the exact same amount, because the party departments respond in eleven, all sides of fires. The entire public vote in that fight. So if I do have a million dollar home, which I don't, I don't feel I have to pay any more than the guy that might have a hundred thousand dollar home down the street. And everybody, a fair share is an exact amount, that's a fair share. So please consider that on how you debate on what's gonna happen with that. And if it's a one-time fee, maybe that's acceptable, but please consider that, make it work.
Thank you.
You got me at two fifty-two already. My name's Steve Haney, and I'm really upset about this whole trip to Germany too. You guys did this without telling anybody in advance, you didn't try to build up any community support, you didn't sell the idea beforehand, you took the county lawyer. It seems like this is a done deal. You aren't gonna do anything that you can't do already, because we've got a business that relocated to our Commerce Park from Germany. And whenever they're looking for places to relocate, or put a new business establish somewhere, they're not gonna be saying, oh, we gotta do this because of a sister city. They're gonna look for where they get the best deal, what serves their business the best. It's about making money, not sister city deals, as far as any kind of tourism that you're gonna get. We're a secondary kind of tourism area. If somebody's gonna come here, if they're gonna fly across an ocean, they might go to Biltmore. And if they're gonna spend night in a hotel, it's gonna be Greenville, because they got a nightlife. We might get somebody walking a trail of the state park, and those state parks are kind of free, it doesn't really bring a lot of money here. Culturally, we're not the same, the Germans have decided they're gonna replace their population with Syrian immigrants, refugees, whatever you wanna call them. The culture over there is dying, the people are aging out, they're not breeding, so they bring in some new people who are Islamic, that's the culture that they have, that's what they're bringing. There's no reason to have this sister city deal, and I noticed that it's on tonight's agenda, like, again, it's a done deal. But the thing is, is all you're gonna do is spend money with some kind of sister city association? Whenever you could be spending that money elsewhere to promote Pickens County and bring in businesses, you don't need to do this. You need to just kill the whole thing, you started off on the wrong foot by keeping it a secret and doing it on the sly. You need to start over if you want people to support this.
Thank you.
I'm gonna start with the trip to Europe. There isn't anything this council should be doing internationally. Not international tourism, not international economic development, not international diplomacy. There's a million things the county should be doing in and around Pickens to promote tourism here. As for economic development, didn't you say Alliance? Didn't you say in addition to Alliance Pickens, that we needed the upstate alliance as well? I remember that in debates, I was in a debate. You joined upstate alliance. You now need to make trips to Europe personally, on top of that? I'm sorry, to me, it looked more like a personal trip than a business trip, especially bringing wives, visiting relatives, going to a museum, visiting a castle. And I agree with the rest of them. We didn't learn about this from the council leadership, we didn't learn about it from a press release, I learned about it from a citizen on Facebook, and that was disappointing. And the rest of yous, why didn't you stop this, or at least tell the public? You passed the budget to fund the trip, you said nothing about it, that makes you partially responsible for it. In addition to approving budgets, approving budgets, you have the responsibility to monitor, monitor spending, and if you see something, or you hear something that you don't like, you've gotta speak up about it. Under new business on your agenda, you can bring up anything, and you should have brought this up, you should have asked for an itinerary of the trip, you should have made a motion to stop it, anybody could have done that. I ran, I was in a debate with most, most of yous, we all ran as leaders, there was no leadership from the rest of yous on this. You guys are elected to be the public's ears, eyes, and voices. If you're blind, deaf, and you're mute to things like this, because you're all friends now, you don't belong here. And it's too much of that in government, this isn't a club up here, you gotta be independent. Sometimes that means open your mouth and stand against the crowd. The other issue is the fire tax, and I'll say something short about that. The county's proposed reorganizing fire services with a twenty-five mil property tax on houses, cars, boats, RVs, motorcycles, vacant land, and businesses too. It's being sold like it will save money, and I can tell you, it won't. The proof is in the plan itself. Look at the plan, the first year, it grows taxes and spending twenty-five percent, from six, six point two million to seven point seven million. You guys cannot allow your departments and agencies to do what they want. They're gonna bankrupt us while you're up here asleep. You gotta watch what they're doing, and you've pledged to lead, stop deferring to the administration, stop deferring to department heads and council leadership, and lead.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your leadership in this county. I want to stand here and endorse your initiative to reorganize our fire service in Pickens County. Fire service is one of the most important functions that the county provides. And besides perhaps EMS and law enforcement, I would rate it right up there with those. So I fully endorse your move to reorganize our fire system. I know this has been ongoing for some number of months and perhaps years. I think that what is needed, as I see, is a much broader committee. You need to put a lot of citizens on this committee. You need to have perhaps meetings with all of the fire boards to get their full input. You need citizen input. And there needs to be a full inventory made and grading of all equipment. Is it tier one, tier two, tier three, whatever it is? Put it down. We want to know as people of this county what kind of system we have and what kind of equipment we have and what we need. I would question the, the funding system that has been proposed, 25 mills. I don't know. It said one time in the paper, but now that's the paper. I don't know if that was in, in, in fact, the report that they gave or not, but I'm not particularly interested, maybe in, in the amount of money, but what you need to do is be fair to everybody with the amount of money. It takes as, takes as much gas to run a fire truck and help to a $100,000 house as it does to a $500,000 house. So I would question maybe your funding mechanism. I realize you do need equipment. You need money. We need to upgrade our system. And I would also indicate that the significant meeting that you're planning in easily, excuse me, Liberty, seems to be a little premature. You need to build up to that first before you have a, have a significantly county meeting. I would suggest you, you do some, a lot of work with the fire districts, the chiefs, the county, and put people on your committee to help develop our fire plan. So I do, I do endorse this move to, to in fact, improve our fire system. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Winchester.
Mr. Chairman, the members of council is supposed to public forum.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll move on to our next item, which is number three, approval of minutes. I'll ask for a motion approving the minutes for the February 5th, 2018 meeting. Motion by Councilman Thiemster.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hudson. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. Onto item number four, administrator's report. The chair recognizes Gerald Wilson, council administrator, for his report.
Can you hear me now? Mr. Chairman, members of council, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. First thing I wanted to update you on is part of our sesquicentennial anniversary, we're excited to announce our team-up and cleanup Pickens County event. This is a program where we're going to be closing the nonessential operations of county and county staff along with members of the public are going out and we're going to be cleaning our road sides up. We've teamed up with Palmetto Pride. They're going to supply the safety gear and the materials to do this with. But on Friday, March the 23rd, we're going to be coming together as a community. We invite the public to kind of attend that project, be part of it. And we hope to see members of council there as part of that. I'd also just like to remind the public at the county landfill, we still have mulch available. It's free to the public. We encourage our residents to come out, take part, and be part of that program.
All right, let's move on to item number five, committee of the whole report. The committee of the whole met in the council auditorium on Monday, February 26th, and you've got a written report in your packet. The first item addressed was log number 87, the senior center for the town of Central. The committee recommends first reading and title only of an ordinance to convey the senior center property located at 120 Commons Way to the town of Central. As a reminder, the ordinance requires three separate readings and a public hearing. As this comes as a recommendation from the committee, it doesn't require a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. And motion carries. Item number six, council correspondence. I do want to reiterate what was said with, about Palmetto Pride and our partnership, I guess, with them for March 23rd. And basically, we're getting ready to jump into our 150-year sesquicentennial. So we thought about this, if we're going to have a big celebration, invite folks over, then we want to make sure we clean up. So we're going to clean up. And I encourage anybody and everybody to help participate on that, that day. We had a lot of folks talk about the litter that's, that's in the county. And you know, if, if five, if five people, if on Fridays, we pick up five pieces of trash, if everybody in the county would do it, they'd pick up half a million pieces of trash every Friday, and we clean up. So we're, we're excited about that. The other correspondence that I have. Next to me, the whole meeting is going to be held on Monday, March the 19th, in the main conference room of this facility. And I also wanted to, to make a note, in order to avoid any confusion tonight from the public, we've had several comments here in our, our public forum regarding the county's recent economic development tourism initiative to Germany. And I thank you all for your interest in this new program. I would ask you all to note, this matter is not on the agenda for discussion tonight, but it is in our consent agenda to be referred to committee of the whole for a full discussion in the coming days. And we invite you all to attend that meeting and learn more about the opportunity for our county. Is there any other correspondence that needs to be announced? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item number seven, motion period and new business. We're now to our motion period. Does any member have any motions at this time? I do have one motion I'd like to add to the executive session on economic development that I found out about today. I make that as a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bowers. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. Onto item number eight, consideration of resolution regarding, excuse, not regarding, recognizing Isabel Wallace, and I'm going to say this name wrong because I didn't ask. Isabel, excuse me, Isabel Wallace and Hayden Ferrera for their efforts in creating the sesquicentennial seal for Pickens County. Did I say that right? Okay. I did? You're here? Cool. Thank you. I'm sorry. I ask for a motion and a second to approve this resolution. Motion by Councilman Hendricks. Second by Councilman Thiemster. Any discussion?
It looks good. They did, y'all did a good job.
Excellent work, excellent work. And, and thanks for all the input from council to make sure that we got the number of stars right and that we honor those, those, those folks on there.
Does the public know what the stars?
Tell them.
All right, stars, I mean, some Pickens County is known for the Medal of Honor. We got four recipients in our county with the Medal of Honor. And that's what those four stars signify, and that's pretty special. So, and also at the courthouse, there's things, so, monuments and things like that regarding that as well. So we're one of the, maybe us and maybe another county in Colorado, whoever, but we're per capita have the most Medal of Honor recipients, I mean, by America. So we are a very patriotic county. We're very proud of that.
That's, that's pretty awesome. This time, I'd like to call Isabel Wallace and Hayden Ferrera forward.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, no?
Y'all buzzed it.
Oh, we got to vote first. Sorry, I'm already just jumping right in the gun. There's been a motion, a second. There's a discussion. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of this resolution, simply by raising your hands. And motion carries.
Now.
Isabel Wallace and Hayden Ferrera, if you guys will come forward.
Clear. Up there. Y'all want to come down with me? Y'all want to come down here with me? We're going to go right over here. Okay. Those are the things I'm getting this at. Isabel Wallace is hereby presented with the outstanding and chief award on behalf of Pickens County for her efforts and achievements in creating the sesquicentennial seal for the county's 150th anniversary celebration on this fifth day of March 2018. Were you, same thing, were you, and this is presented with the outstanding and chief award for Hayden Ferrera? I understand you're right. Okay, stop me if I'm not. To Hayden Ferrera, that's presented to you. Congratulations.
All right, our next item on the agenda is number nine, consideration of resolution declaring March as Bleeding Disorder Awareness Month and matters related thereto. I'd like to call on Councilman Bowers if he will read this resolution.
All right, resolution declaring March as Bleeding Disorder Awareness Month and matters related to, whereas Pickens County, South Carolina is a political subdivision of the state of South Carolina, as such, has all powers granted to counties by the constitution and the general laws of the state of South Carolina. And whereas the Hemophilia Federation of America is a nonprofit organization incorporated to address the evolving needs of the bleeding disorders community. HFA serves as an advocate for safe, affordable, and obtainable blood products and health coverage, as well as better quality of life for all persons with bleeding disorders. And whereas Pickens County Council recognizes and appreciates our citizens who suffer from bleeding disorders and resolves that public education is a legitimate approach to assisting our citizens so afflicted, now therefore, it be resolved by the county council of Pickens, South Carolina, that March is hereby recognized as Bleeding Disorder Awareness Month. This is the time to educate ourselves and raise awareness of rare bleeding disorders. Our citizens are encouraged to participate in the Bleeding Disorder Awareness Social Media Campaign to display support ribbons and take part in advocacy action regarding this group of disease. And that would be my motion for this resolution.
All right, there's a motion on the resolution. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Thiemster. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And motion carries. On to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Onto item number 10, consideration to approve the preliminary certification regarding the special tax assess- assessment for the rehabilitated historic property known as the Easely Cotton Mill. This is a request to approve the application for a preliminary certification for a project seeking special tax assessment for rehabilitated historic properties. The reference historic property is the Easely Cotton Mill. Mr. Roper, is there anything you can add to this for, for council to understand?
This is a, a ordinance that's in place that the council passed some years back that reflects state law. And what it basically does is allows someone that wants to rehab an old dilapidated cotton mill, a tax incentive. It freezes their assessment at a flat level so that they're not penalized for fixing up a dilapidated cotton mill. So what happens tonight is that you're just approving it, that it's an appropriate structure for this designation. It's on the National Historic Register of Places, and they provided that documentation to you in your packet. So what will happen now, if council approves this as an appropriate building for this designation, is then they will be required to coordinate with county planning to make sure they don't, for lack of a better word, ruin the historic nature of the property by the renovation. And as long as they comply with keeping it a historic property and they don't disturb that aspect of it, at the end of the process, the county staff would approve it and say that it meets the designation under state law.
All right, I ask for a motion and a second to approve the preliminary certification as presented.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Councilman Bowers. Second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Whitehurst. Is there any other discussion?
I have some questions. The plans are fairly extensive that we've been given. Now, was that easily city planning commission, has that been approved to them or does that come through Pickens?
They'll still have to get regular building permits, regular planning commission approval and everything with the city of the easily. The only thing the county will be in charge of is making sure that they follow the historic preservation aspect of it.
So like, questions I have regarding water runoff, interest in intersections, things like that, that's going to be handled within the city of easily.
That's correct. That's correct.
The county tax dollars will not be paying for intersections or?
No, we'll basically be an eye that watches to maintain that they comply with the historic aspect, and that'll be our only role.
Mr. Roper, we went through this a couple of years ago on this project. Did that, I think at the time, they were looking for a tax break to make their numbers work properly. Am I correct on that?
I don't know the motivation. I do know that this was been through the process once before and approved as part of that process.
It was approved, but it was approved upon him providing, doing the project first, I believe, is that they had to, they had to pull this together and have all their ducks in row, which obviously they didn't because it didn't go through. Is this the same company or is this a different company?
It's a different company.
So the guys that attempted to do it before, what was or what is the tax break that we're offering?
The way that it works is the property's being taxed right now, okay? And it's assessed, and I apologize for not having the assessed value in front of me, but that may be in your packet. It's in the 100,000s. It's between 100,000 and 200,000.
162,000 is what I see.
Yeah, so it's being taxed right now. The way the state law works and the way the county ordinance works is if they comply with all our rules and they rehab the, the empty structure and bring it into use, but still maintain the historic use of the building, then they qualify to stay at that assessed value for several years after.
Do we have a number of years in here?
It's in there. It's 20 years.
So it's 20 years of keeping it 162,000.
Right.
And apparently, they're putting $24 million into the project. Is that what I'm looking?
You're looking at the same thing I was looking at. That's what I see.
Because I know we went through this thing pretty detailed before, and now it's just kind of all packaged up and laid out. And I'm not sure what questions, I got to rehash my memory on what went through this. If we approve this tonight, are we locked into this thing or is this a first step?
You're locked into it in the sense that you have made the preliminary certification. If they don't follow the plan as presented, then we would need this. But the plan, the determination you're making tonight is not, what's the appropriate lighting for the building?
I'm not, no, I know that.
It's not anything like that. It's more the, the thing that you're evaluating tonight is instead, is this appropriate property for historic rehabilitation?
Well, part of the reason we looked at before, because this building was completely dilapidated.
Right.
And it is a blight on the community. And if someone comes in there and puts $24 million into it, then it's going to increase at least the area around it. I understand there was a lot of crime going on here. I don't know what the current status situation is.
The theory, you're exactly right. The theory there is that you're incentivizing the redevelopment of that dilapidated property, and it helps the property values all around. And so we still see a net.
What, what I want to make sure, and I'm, I'm still going by memory, is that they don't get this special tax assessment unless this project goes forward.
You're absolutely right. They have to get all the way to the final certification, which will be done by the planning department, that they comply with everything before they're eligible to apply for the tax incentive.
Now, we've had one company do this and wasn't successful. They never went forward. Have we done any research on this company and see if we're wasting our time on this and have another one fall on their face?
I have not, but there's no, and the reason I have not is if they don't complete the process, they don't get the tax assessment.
Right, but somebody else who may be better qualified would not have that opportunity while they piddle around for two years like the last guys did.
All I would say there, and I'm not advocating for or against the position, I'm just trying to answer your questions, all I'd say there is they own that property.
They've already bought the property?
Yes.
From the other guys, apparently?
The deed's in your packet.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Councilman Bow.
I have limited knowledge on this, but I do have limited knowledge. When I saw it on the agenda, I did a little digging. And but what I understand, the company that is looking at doing this project now is a company that has been successful in other areas of the, the region and the state in doing this type of. doing this type of rehab on these type of properties. They have successfully.
Who is the company?
It was listed in there. It's on the first pages.
Kingside.
Say that's the.
Kingside Redevelopment.
Yeah, I'd say that's like an LLC type deal if I were.
Page two's got Kingside.
Did you research them? Is that what you're saying?
The, correct. Not that company, no. But through asking questions, I determined it was someone that has done this in other areas. And just because, I don't know if they want it out, I don't want to say exactly who I was told it was. But what I understand, they've done this type of deal in other neighboring counties and have been very successful.
One of the things, the reason we looked at doing this before is because they had to borrow money to pull the project off. And we looked at it from a county perspective and said, okay, if they have to borrow and it helps us overall, this is an income producing property. They're going to make money on this. And so I guess it's a pretty, it's a pretty steep tax break for $162,000 property and they're putting $24 million into it. Are we restricted on a timeframe on this?
Not that I'm aware of. There's no timeframe that's been communicated to, to me as a part of the, I apologize, the screen went out. There's no, no timeframe that's been communicated to me that they're looking at. I'm just, I know they're not able to so-called break ground until they have this designation. And I don't know what they're looking at.
I know last time, these people came to us, presented a whole package of what they were going to do, how they're going to do it, how it's going to impact the community and that whole thing. And if they're asking for this type of tax break, I would like to have them come show us what they're going to do. So I would like to. It's, I know it's all written in pictures and stuff. But I would like to make a motion and move it to committee and, and have them come present to us if they want to have this and see what they're coming up with, what their ideas, and what their, what the reason for the, for the big tax break. I understand it's historic site, but right now, we're just trying, it's a dump. It's not worth any more than this. But after it's done, it's going to be worth several, several million dollars.
One thing it's going to do also, of course, increase tax values, but people spending money within that area. They got to eat. They got to buy gas. They got to buy clothes. They're going to spend some money. It's going to bring in some revenue.
And that's one of the things I want to hear from them.
Stuff like that in Columbia, Greendale, places like that is a good thing.
I'm not against the idea.
There's a motion on the table to move this to the consent agenda for committee of the whole. Is there a second on that?
No second.
There's no second. So that fails. We're going back to, any further discussion? Councilman Hendricks, did you, I cut you off. I apologize.
No, no, that's fine. I just made a point that this is a good idea, what they're doing. Understand what Councilwoman Whitehurst is talking about, the break, is there a time limit on things like that? But according to what Mr. Roper is saying, our job is just to say, is this fit the qualifications?
Is there any other discussion on this?
I'm going to, because I want to know more from the guys, because I've been down this road before, council. And based on that, I'm, since it's not going to go to committee, I'm going to vote against it. If it's still going to pass, that's fine. I just don't have enough information on my part to think when I can make a decision on it.
I understand that 100 percent, and I appreciate that and that stance. I have been down this road. Literally, it's four roads behind where I live.
I don't mean that road. I mean the road of developers. You've been down this road. I've been down that road too.
You've been down that road, and I have physically been down this road because it's four roads behind where I live. And I can definitely see the benefit, not only to the community, but to, to the county as a whole, when you are able to rehab and.
I agree.
You know?
I agree. There's a benefit. I just want to see everything that presents me, that's me.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in, in favor of the consideration to approve the preliminary certification regarding the special tax assessment for the rehabilitated historic property known as the Easley Cotton Mill, signify by raising your hand. And against? Motion carries five to one. Onto item number 11, consent agenda. So the consent agenda, we have healthcare coverage and options for fiscal year 18, 2018, 2019 to committee of the whole. Update on the Twin County Partnership with the district calls rule to committee of the whole. Pumpkin Town Fire District Property Purchase Committee of the whole. And then discussing past, present, and future of Pickens County from a historical perspective requested by Mr. Alan Quinn to committee of the whole. Is there anything else that we need to add to the consent agenda?
Can't add it.
Oh, you can't, you're right, can't add it at this point. Sorry, sorry. I'm, I'm just thinking wrong there. Thank you. I'm asking for a motion.
I give you a motion.
A motion, sorry.
Second.
A second. Motion by Councilman Bowers, second by Councilman Whitehurst. I apologize. Is there any discussion? That's where I was trying to go. All right, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. And motion carries. Item number 12 is our executive session. We've got several things to talk about. We'll be talking about contractual issues, section 30 dash 4 dash 70 with MRR. Legal issues, potential opioid lawsuit. I added economic development on a phone call I got from another council member from tonight. So economic development added. Boards and commissions for those vacancies, for accommodations tax, Appalachian Council of Government Assessment and Appeals, Beautification Committee, Cultural Commission, Economic Development Alliance, Emergency Services Advisory Board, Fire District Boards for Central, Quaswell, Dacisville, Easley, Holly Springs, Liberty, Pickens, Pumpkin Town, Rocky Bottom, Shady Grove, Six Mile, GPATS, Pickens County Grievance Committee, Public Service Commission, Tourism Board, Work Link, Zoning and Appeals, and then our nonprofit corporation boards for Haygood Mill, Performing Arts Center, and the Pickens County Museum. So, I think I might go to that. Ask, yeah, motion by Councilman Bowers that we enter into executive session for the reasons that are listed. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hudson. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. All right, we'll take a quick break and then retire to a closed session. Thank you.